All right, we're going to move on to the agenda item five comments from the public. I was asked before the meeting started to know what was going to be the time allowed for a public comment and we're going to go back to our old format of three minutes. And the reason why we did what we did in the last meeting is certainly because we had removed the agenda item from the agenda and I just felt like shorter comment that night would be appropriate. So we're back to our old format. I've got 23 people who have signed up for public comment under agenda item number five. The agenda item number five, public comment, is for items that are not on the agenda tonight. So if you want to talk about something that isn't on the agenda tonight, I will do my best to get you in if in fact you didn't have an opportunity to sign up. But I have 23 people that have signed up. If I give everybody three minutes and allow five minutes for change, total that's 75 minutes. So what we're going to do is we're going to go from what is 7:25 now, we are going to go to 8:40 and that will be an hour and 15 minutes, 75 minutes, that allows three minutes for every speaker. If you don't go over your time, then you'll allow everybody else to have an opportunity to speak. So let's get started. Get a little closer, get a little closer to the mic. You're going to have to get closer.
Thank you. Okay, hello. Thank you. I'm Elaine Gil Martin and I'm coming from Penya Blanca and Cile area with other members from our community. If we can stand and just show you who we are.
Okay, who do we have with you there?
This is Sandra Gutierrez, who is the director of the water company in Penya Blanca. We are here because Penya Blanca and Cile are an unincorporated area which is directly affected by drilling in our fragile, generous, beautiful watershed. We have grave concerns about the impact upon our infrastructure, our jobs, and other issues which others will speak to this evening. But the most important thing is that we urge you to please postpone decisions about drilling in our area until you have been able to fully review and open for public review the geo-hydro study which was initiated by Sandoval County that will be completed in 2018. We appreciate and thank you for facing the challenge of thinking about these very important issues carefully because we've got to get it right. The consequences of decisions that are made that are too expensive, that are too dangerous, will affect life long after we're gone downstream from us and we are all downstream. Thank you.
All right, thank you Ms. Gutierrez. Ms. Gutierrez, did you want to speak?
Yes, my name is Sandra Gutierrez. I'm with Penya Blanca Water Sanitation District. I'm from Cile, so I represent Cile and Penya Blanca. My responsibility is to deliver good drinking water to those communities and I just feel that you shouldn't be drilling in those areas.
Okay, is that it? Thank you very much.
Yeah. Water is life.
And you've got someone with you.
I'm Yau.
Oh, you're just going to, okay.
Is this close enough?
Get a little closer.
There.
There you go.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak to you. My name is Michelle Swanson and I'm from Cile, New Mexico, Penya Blanca area. I have brought a map of a geological study that shows the formations of gravel, sediments, the salts, and soils that are in our area. This actually constitutes a world-class aquifer that not too many people even know about. The interesting thing about this area is not only that it has very much water underneath it, it's drinkable and non-contaminative, but also this area geologically is a very fragile environment. It has nine volcano tops, some of them they're right in Cochise Lake. It also has 19 different fault zones that come down and touch each other. The interesting thing about this area is that if you are an oil and gas person, you try not to do any harm. The faults on this area are so close together, they're a mile or a mile and a half or three quarters of a mile apart. So if there was drilling or some kind of liquid put in this area, these faults actually have a chance to create earthquakes in this area. This area is about water. There's so much water in this, not so much water in this bed, that this is part of our future. The other thing I would like to show you is this cross area here. This is looking at a frontal, this is the cross section of it. It shows faults, it shows all the sediments, it shows the way the faults are coming together and coming down, and it also shows this incredible shifting pattern detected over hundreds and thousands and millions of years. This is a very vulnerable area. It's also an incredibly interesting area, but it's a very fragile zone. What I would like to ask the people in this area. Have a few minutes? Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. And I would like to put this in, am I wearing the phone? It's not half as good as mine.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
But at least it does say something about. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you for having the courage to come up before the commission.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Wrigley. I've been a resident of New Mexico over 30 years. I have two graduate degrees from University of New Mexico, I'm a UNM fellow, I'm a Ford Foundation fellow, I am a National Endowment for the Arts fellow and twice nominated Rudy Hine fellow. I've also taught at UNM for a number of years. I'm now an organic farmer in Cile, New Mexico, for the past 17 years. I'd like to just draw the commission attention to some points such as the BBC Environmental News reported that 16% of oil and gas wells leak chemicals. That would be 6,600 in just four states. The National Academy of Science quote, "Contaminants can migrate laterally through kilometers of rock impacting aquifers used for potable water." The New York Times story on a study by Dr. Brantley of Penn State states that shale drilling fluids were found in domestic wells. The migration of these toxic chemicals traveled. Also in this same New York Times article, three Bradford County PA homeowners successfully sued Chesapeake Energy who settled and also purchased the three homes. The EPA scientist Dominic DeGiulio came to the very same conclusion in Pavilion, Wyoming, Wind River Basin. Lastly, I refer the commission to the final report of the Environmental Protection Agency on water and fracking which states, "Water contamination can occur because of spills during handling fracking drilling fluids, before and after use, storage and online slurry pits of these same chemicals can seep into groundwater, the integrity of drill casings and depth of intermediate casings," which I don't think anyone has considered yet, "and also the injection of hydro drilling fracking fluids directly into the groundwater." From what I understand, they have to go through this magnificent aquifer in order to hit the shale. I came here to do no harm. I ran a very, very successful business for 20 years and after being in business, I said to myself, "Let me do something for the environment, for the world, for the country." I've planted over 4,000 trees on my 328 organic farm. I have done everything that I could possibly think of to sequester carbon. I would also like the commissioners to have this. These are the references from which I quote.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wrigley. John Compton? I saw the gentleman getting up, I just assumed that's who it was. Okay, he's not here. Kathleen Rudy? Kathleen Rudy?
Good evening, commissioners. Can you?
Get a little closer.
Good evening, commissioners and Chairman Chapman. My name is Kathleen Rudy. I live at 82 Cile Road in Penya Blanca, New Mexico. I oppose any gas and oil exploration in my area. Much has been discussed in these chambers about the industry, the oil and gas industry bringing higher pay and jobs to Sandoval County. Various studies on the topic indicate that this isn't true. The local labor force, which doesn't have the skills to operate oil and gas equipment, the local labor force doesn't have the skills to operate oil and gas equipment, so skilled labor would have to be brought into the county. This also means that the wages would be sent outside the county to families of the employed workers. Gas and oil industry is land, capital, and technology intensive, but not labor intensive. In the case of the Raton Basin, the number of jobs that were created per well in the Raton Basin, that's northern New Mexico as well, southern Colorado, amount to only 0.12 job per well. Economic research indicates that the counties that are not focused on fossil fuel extraction experience higher growth rates and a higher tax base and a higher revenue stream. I just want to, since I have 30 minutes, I want to cite the example, in Cile, we have a medical marijuana facility and we all look at that as a good job producer for the local area, but they haven't produced one single job in Cile or in Penya Blanca. So we've experienced this firsthand. People coming and they bring all their people in and they don't interact with the community at all. Thank you. And I also have something on for the record.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rudy. Sheila Givens?
Good evening. My name is Sheila Givens.
Get a little closer.
Okay. All right. My name is Sheila Givens. I live in Penya Blanca. I am a physician's assistant and I have a master's degree in business and I'm also really nervous, so I hope I don't screw up here with what I say. I want to address what I call the negative opportunity costs of oil and gas production. If the land, or the air, or the water is polluted, or for instance, it smells a lot, which is common in oil and gas drilling areas, there would be lost future business development opportunities. Companies would not want to move to such an area. People would not want to work or live there. Farmers might not be able to grow or sell their produce. And developers would not want to develop there. There would be negative impacts to the county and individuals from poorly located or regulated oil and gas development. I know all of you, as I understand, have gotten the New Mexican-made documentary split that states, I know that commissioners at a number of other counties have gotten to look at this, sorry, and it has helped in their development of the appropriate and safe oil and gas regulations. So thank you for your time and I hope that's real.
You did good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Ms. Hall.
Good morning, Commissioner and members of the commission. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Sally Hall. I live in Penya Blanca. I'm an artist and I've had a landscaping business using native plants for 30 years. My daughter Clea and I have a horse and donkey sanctuary in Penya Blanca. Our community is unique. We have the beauty of vast amounts of unobstructed land. The same families have lived here for generations. Farming is a way of life here. Everyone has a few animals and grows vegetables. People supplement their income by growing alfalfa. Some rely on it for their living. We have eagles, osprey, migratory birds, mountain lions, bobcat, black bear, elk, mule deer, coyote, badgers, owls, hawks, and many more. People keep sheep, goats, cattle, horses, donkeys, chickens, ducks, pigs, geese, and peacocks. Oil and gas penetration of the earth crust around Penya Blanca on the Rio Grande Rift could permanently damage the groundwater and the water of the Rio Grande for future generations and forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I am Stephanie Garcia Richard. I am a member of the New Mexico State Legislature and Commissioner Eichbold is one of my constituents. So I want to first thank you all for taking public comment. For those of us who traveled a long way and have sat in the audience, we very much appreciate you hearing from us. I'm an educator, so I was enjoying all of the presentations that you all got to hear about the great things that are happening in your county that Aska Academy is really doing well. So I am here this evening to address you all on the subject of the Sandoval County oil and gas ordinance and I am here actually at the request of my constituents who you have been hearing from this evening during public comment. And I just want to take a moment to really let them know how proud I am of them. They are very knowledgeable about the hydrology and the geology of their communities and they traveled a long way to come and wait for a long time to sit in front of this body and give their feedbacks, so I'm very appreciative and proud to represent them. Gentlemen, I said that I was an educator and I understand the importance of the oil and gas industry to our state. However, we want to ask you gentlemen this evening to consider, is the importance of an industry worth the sacrifice of our clean water, clean air, and pristine lands? Because you all know, you live in Sandoval County, you know the beauty of this place. And so what we are asking tonight is if this ordinance does have to move, and I'm hearing that probably it will, what we are asking is reasonable protections on what we value, our land, our water, and our air. Clean land, water, and air. I think that we should all take a note from the gentleman from Cile, the organic farmer when he said, "Do no harm." I think those of us who are lawmakers, leaders, should take that Hippocratic oath when we think about our constituents and make our decisions by doing no harm. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, and I'm not speaking for myself, but for Bob Wesley. He unfortunately couldn't be here. You all saw him, he seemed so healthy and he just looked a little tired today, so he asked me if I would present an article that he felt that he needed to have, he's very concerned about, of course regarding oil and gas. So this is what he says. "Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I would like to call your attention to an article in yesterday's Santa Fe, New Mexico, that points out how oil and gas companies have been cheating local governments out of taxes," cheating is the word used in the article. Please refer to the first paragraph of the article which refers to, quote, "Thousands of miles of natural gas pipelines and hundreds of compressors, drilling rigs, and other equipment," unquote. The proposed Stoddard ordinance contains no reference to those pervasive ancillary facilities. As the draft ordinance stands, you have no way of knowing about the existence of such taxable facilities often behind locked fences, and you certainly have no way of protecting the citizenry from their inputs. Thank you. So I will hand out and copy of this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Feldman. Eldren Haas? Did I get that right, sir? Do you mind stating your address or do you just?
It's in Rio Rancho, 4501 Safely Boulevard.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, Mr. Chapman, I want to thank you for allowing us three minutes unlike last time. We shall see what happens next at the meeting on the night. Correction, 6:30. Okay, first off, enforcement of the Sandoval County oil and gas ordinance. Let me read Article 10 enforcement, specifically 10.2 violations. I'm going to read the sentence here, quote, "Fined for violating any provision of this ordinance shall not exceed $300 or the maximum legally allowable, and fines shall be payable to the county. The fine may be waived in the self-discretion of the county if the alleged committee or violator commences an incompetent satisfactory action to remedy the alleged violation." Now, my question for all of you is, where is the specific oversight? Where is the accountability? Who are going to be the ones who are actually going to visit the sites, visit the well sites, and ensure that all the actions are permitted lawfully? Are we supposed to simply trust the committee on that issue? Let me give you an example of one issue that took place, and there's a connection, by the way, to Rio Rancho ordinance. January 14, 2016, Continental Resources Oil Field Site just east of Chickasha, Oklahoma, $50 million fire. And this is where it gets interesting. Granted, another county, another state, I realize that. Fire Chief Myers, who was the fire chief on site, stated, "Since the fire was not suspicious in nature, they will not be involved in the investigation of the cause." It gets more interesting. Continental Resources will conduct their own in-house investigation, fox guarding the house meeting. And then it gets better. They did not respond to requests for information on Thursday. Now, see? Oh, my time's up. Pleasure, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Eldren Haas.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak. I moved to Penya Blanca in 1998 and although I'm a resident now of Cochise Lake, I lived there for 16 years and I'm here to implore you all to vote against the Stoddard ordinance and any other oil and gas exploration in the Rio Grande watershed and aquifer for reasons already mentioned, including pollution and potential earthquakes. As a former teacher at the Cochise School in Bernalillo Public Schools and former resident of Penya Blanca and a current teacher at the Caris Tolden Learning Center and current resident of Cochise Lake, on behalf of my current and former students and my neighbors and my family and our friends, we want you to know that we want clean, safe drinking water, clean air, peace of mind, and stable property values. We want clean, safe water for our children, our elders, our families, and our neighbors. Please say no to this Stoddard ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haskins. Blas. Alco. Blas. Nope. Okay. Debbie Keifer? We're getting a little ahead of the curve here, which is good. Time-wise.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm Debbie Keifer. I've only been a resident here for a few weeks, but I've lived in other states where fracking has come in and I've seen the results. I just want to make a few points. Number one, large oil and gas companies use billions of gallons of water from the aquifer. The leftover water containing the toxins is then injected below the aquifer. And we live in a desert. We need water protected. Two, your property value goes down and commercial vehicle traffic will go up. Your tax dollars pay for these roads. Three, our state already has the largest methane cloud in the world. 2,500 square miles. This methane cloud is observable in space. We need our air protected. Four, this is not just a small endeavor. The proposed lease contains 4,434 acres in three counties. Five, areas where you find fracking, you find an increase in earthquakes. Is there an emergency safety response? Five, jobs will be created, however, the vast majority of these jobs are created by skilled labor that's brought in specifically for the job from other states. Then they move on to other areas. This is not long-term job growth. Six, health consequences. There have been many studies, but I would refer to you to the video that we saw at the beginning, "Health is Wealth." I have the sightings here from Scientific American, Duke Chronicle, Environmental Defense Fund, PBS, and Forbes. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Arthur Henry Fratz? Senator Kimberly Fredts?
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Fredts. That was my mother. You always feel a little intimidated after you fall on your mom because you're not quite as wise yet. So with that said, I'm here to speak about the fracking and the folks that's coming up mid this month, I believe. There are many other people that have spoken this evening that are imminently more qualified than I am to speak on this subject. My degrees are in theology. Don't worry. I'm not preaching this evening. It's very short. My other job is mom. One of the main pieces of being a mom is helping people make decisions. So hi, that's what I'm here for. I would like to talk to you about the decision that y'all are about to make. And not necessarily from the perspectives that you have heard from tonight. The air, the water, the land, the people who live on it, the animals that live on it, everyone that shares this space. The science actually speaks for itself. What I'm asking you to consider this evening is the future. And the future in terms of life. If there is any doubt anywhere in your minds at all, please, sit with this decision just a little bit longer. The oil and gas companies aren't going anywhere. Give it time. Sit with it. Think about it. If there is some small doubt, and I realize you've probably already made up your minds, sit with everything one more time. You can turn to the girl in the yellow shirt back there. She's already heard this lecture several times. Go over everything one more time. Don't need to do anything. The repercussions from this decision are simply too dire, too all-encompassing, and too permanent, to hope that this works out well. I would also like to say what moms always say, "I know you'll do the right thing." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fredts.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. My name is Richard Gourdes. I live here in Rio Rancho. Tonight, I'd like to express and address some of the recent statements, editorial commentary, and unsubstantiated comments and misleading accusations in the local news. Now, I realize that both the right to work and the oil and gas ordinance are highly controversial. However, I wish everyone would step back and look at the facts and not just throw out ongoing bumper sticker propaganda. Unfortunately, the public has come to expect this from the high-charge political agendas. However, what really bothers me here is some of the recent coverage by the Rio Rancho Observer, newspaper journalist Steve Montoya. In his one-sided article titled Voices Carry on October 23, 2017, he quotes numerous people who are protesting against the oil and gas ordinance. As a matter of fact, he quotes 12 negative statements. However, zero positives. Let me reiterate. How many quotes or statements do you suppose there are from those who support this ordinance? Oh, that would be zero. Another of the misleading and false statements in this article referred to a comment that Commissioner Chapman had supposedly made after a meeting with the San Fueble. It states that Commissioner Chapman, quote, insisting that the Fueble of San Fueple San Fueple was in agreement with this ordinance as written. However, he did not say that. After reviewing official letters and transcripts, including the videos of both the October 5th and October 19, 2017, Commission meeting, never does he make this statement. These types of misstatements are not helpful to this commission, the Fueble, nor to citizens of Sandoval County. Hey journalist Stephen Montoya and Rio Rancho Observer, do your job fairly and report both pros and cons of this ordinance. So after two years of working on this ordinance, the oil and gas ordinance, I strongly suggest this commission vote in favor of this ordinance. And here's why. As has been stated, in the future, if changes are needed, additions or deletions must be made, then make them. But at least we will now have a basic official format to work with. I also think this commission should vote in favor of the right-to-work ordinance. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gourdes.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Stephen Porczynski. I am the co-chair of the Green Party of the Upper New Metropolitan Area, which covers Sandoval, Valencia, and Burnaleo Counties and Torrance County. We are chartered in the state. And as such, we're also, I'm also today representing Sandoval County Greens that are here. So here's what we have to ask for, and by consensus, we have adopted as far as the greens for this area. There is the question of the evidence, jury material that you'll need for both oil and gas drilling from the standpoint of the documents that you first need for the geology and also the documents that you need for the aquifers. And without that, you can't make a good decision. And neither can the geologists. And that material will not begin until the end of 2018. So best if you consider moratorium in this particular case. Also, from the standpoint of what's missing here is the young children. You are handing off to them a legacy. And the legacy right now is not a good one. There are 65 negative feedback loops right now that climatologists have identified that can take out basically the whole planet. They warned about this before. Oil companies even had their own people in interior that warned them. To the detriment of who? That there wasn't any problem because we say it's not a problem. That's despicable. At the very least. Kids need to be here. And they need to be talking to you about whether or not they want the climate that you want to hand out to them. Over there. No hard feelings. It's the trick-or-treat time. I'm giving them at least a treat to think about because our food supply, our food supply is at risk. Totally, 100% at risk. Our green chili is at risk. So I'm going to make the decision.
Thank you, Mr. Porczynski. So to wrap it up, for the other panel.
Item 13 or 12. The comments from the commissioners. I hope they'll be brief. Who wants to go first?
None.
None for Commissioner Hile? Commissioner Block? No? Commissioner Holland-Rose?
Yes, sir. I would like to request that a motion be placed on the agenda for our next meeting to table the oil and gas ordinance. Until such time as we receive the report from Mexico Tech and we have a chance to study.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hile? Uh, I call.
No, no.
The point is that the man has sort of made a comment here. And if it's going to get on the agenda the way he says it, three people would have to support it. Correct?
But it's on the form of a motion.
Well, it's not sort of a consensus.
That's what I'm saying. Now, if it happens next time, he can formulate his motion. Is that correct?
At the next meeting, he could, there could be a motion to table it. There could also be a motion right now. There is a public notice that it is on the next agenda meeting.
For a vote?
For a vote. The best way for, at that meeting, would be for there to be a motion to table it. That would probably be the, since this is just during the comments. And it's not asking for.
This is just comments.
Correct. And it's not asking for something to be put on the agenda, which would be a different situation.
Just a long meeting. I think these meetings are extremely long. Not only for commissioners. I got more blood in my rear end than I do in my brain because of, you know, so much that has happened. How much you can, you know, studies show that, you know, you can only take in so much over a period of time. And these are, we're going on almost six hours of meeting. And so I'd just like to make a comment that maybe, maybe some of the presentations, something needs to get cut down in some form or manner. That's my only comment.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Eicholm. The only comment I have to make is my team won. My hometown won. We're the world champions. And nobody can take that away from us. Go Houston Astros. Are there any other comments tonight?
We also had a couple of local people who wanted that.
We, we did? We had a local kid make good. Make good in the World Series, no question. I don't think he's going to get the MVP. Or I don't think he did. He didn't. All right. Any other comments? If not, this means adjournment.